Okay, welcome to the July 12th School Committee Meeting. The meeting will be held here at Town Hall at Joe Harvey Hearing Room at One Metcalf Square. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barry? Yes. Mr. Boncori?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Swope?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Here. This meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Mr. Capabianco, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing and seeing no one. We'll move on to general information and recommendations. We have no delegates or visitors. We have two sets of minutes to approve. I believe one was from a special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st, 2021?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Capabianco?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Swope. Any discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry? Yes. Mr. Boncori?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, can I also get a motion to approve the minutes of June 28th, 2021?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Swope?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powell? Any discussion? Hearing none? Patty, can I get a roll call vote?
You got to have a different motion maker because Susan and I were not present, so she can't make the motion.
I'm sorry, that's my fault. I was not there.
Okay, so why don't you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Draw my second.
Draw your second, okay. Can I get a motion to approve the June 21st meeting? Only people that were present.
We did the 28th.
It's the 28th.
I'm sorry, the 28th.
I'm sorry.
And only the people that were present on the 28th, please make that motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell, by Ms. Barry, seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on the June 28th? Minutes?
Just a notice, I abstain.
Okay, hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please, on the June 28th? Minutes?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncori?
Abstain.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Abstain.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on to financial and business procedures. Warrant SVW 21-23, the amount of $1,34,956.99. Can I get a motion for that warrant?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci? Seconded by President Boncori. Any discussion on the warrant? Patty, hearing none? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncori?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco? Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. We also have a budget transfer in the amount of $457,281.3. Do I have a motion for that amount for a budget transfer?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell? Seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on the budget transfer?
Just a point, just a point of clarity. It's a large budget transfer, and as you look through it, you'll see that it's usual and customary for us at the end of the school year to be moving money in the appropriate manner to close out the school year. So that's why it is such a large budget transfer. I want to thank Susan because it is a tremendous amount of work to make sure that those line items, one, the money is appropriately transferred in between categories, and two, that we are able to close out the school year budget on time and make it clear to everybody just exactly how the dollars were spent. So thank you to Susan for that. But it is a large transfer, so I just wanted folks to have a good reason as to why.
Thank you. Patty, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncori?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. General functions, do we don't have any subcommittee reports? Superintendent's report, Ms. Howard?
Yes, thank you. Just back on to the budget a little bit. We have been working tirelessly to really close the budget out as well as prepare and start to work with the new budget that you all have seen. So included in this, in your packet, again, was the transfer, and we've explained that. There's been some new positions that have been added that you will see reflected in the Appointment Section under Personnel. And those are, some of those positions, and I'll read through a few, through them for you, the ones that we have so far. The ESAR grants that are coming through to the town, they are for very specific use for those funds. So at the end of the school year, we do a lot of end-of-the-year data reporting on our students, so evaluating our students to see where they're fitting. So this year, of course, is different than any other school year that we've had. We were pretty intensely looking at the reading scores of our elementary school children. Reading through Zoom was not exactly fun for a lot of our students, and certainly it's the reading support that we provide to our students and the reading instruction was very difficult to achieve. Our teachers did all that they could to keep our students engaged, but as you know, throughout the pandemic, it wasn't students in front of us. We didn't have kids in front of us that we could separate and work into small groups in the moment. We were able to do that in some cases, but not in all. So what we noticed with our K to 2 students was a decline in their reading scores. So we do a number of tests at the end of the school year just to see where our kids, we know where they were at the beginning of the year, where are they in the middle of the year, and where are they at the end of the year. And in looking at those reading scores, we had some pretty heavy concerns about the reading loss that some of our students experienced. So collectively, along with the Curriculum Director and the Principal, Assistant Principal, and the Reading Team, which is inclusive of teachers at the Gorman Fort Banks, we felt strongly that we needed to reduce the class size at least for one year using the ESAR funds so that we could really focus in heavily on reading for our kids beginning again in the fall. We're working on that this summer in our summer program as well, where many students are working with us this year at no cost to families to work on those reading and math and certainly the social-emotional rebuilding that we're trying to achieve with our students. So we are, we'd like to add the first grade and second grade teacher to reduce the class size down to about between 19 and 22, depending upon how many students we have. We do have students that are enrolling, but the staff felt very strongly that they could really hone in on those skills if they could have those class numbers down a little bit more. And we've switched up the focus of reading with our reading teacher. She's going to be doing more pull-out, but also direct instruction with the classroom teachers, model lessons within the classroom and such. The other items or the other positions that we're feeling that we absolutely need based on the outcomes of our evaluations with kids is additional adjustment counseling for, again, at least the school year, using those ESAR funds, which is separate from the school budget funds. So a school adjustment, an additional school adjustment counselor at the high school. The high school currently has one adjustment counselor, which is woefully inept on a good day, but certainly with the recovery that we have to do moving forward, we feel strongly that that position will be helpful. And also at the coming school, the coming school has one. So adding two more adjustment counselors using those funds will allow us to bridge some of the gaps and concerns that we have. Our adjustment counselors have been meeting this summer already, both for COVID planning and our return-to-school recovery planning, as well as dealing with the June 26th issue that we had in the community with the death of two of our community members. So that is an additional position. And then also at the coming school, custodian. We have, you know, have not had appropriate custodial staffing for a few years, so using those appropriate funds to bring on somebody to keep up with the cleaning. Although things will change next year, we still have to pay significant attention to the cleaning and sanitizing of our buildings and constant work within our bathrooms and our classrooms and our desks and making sure our students are remaining safe. And I think the other piece that will be charged either to ESAR funds or potentially to the 240 Special Ed Grant will be some additional, additional hours for a school psychologist. We currently have one, and we subcontract out for about, I think it's eight to 12 hours a week. Dr. John Riley comes in and takes some of the overflow of testing. That testing is being done for students who may qualify for special education, are looking to see if they do qualify, as well as our kids to get a review every three years who are already students on IEPs. They're reevaluated every three years, and part of that is a cognitive evaluation, which is done by the school psychologist. In our transition back-to-school planning, we've identified the need not only to increase the testing capacity, but also to do some direct supervision and oversight and coordinated planning with our adjustment counselors around the impacts of not just the COVID recovery plan, but the emotional trauma that we faced in the community. So that would be an additional position. These positions are, as any new position in the public school, everything is one year anyway. However, these are really separated positions in which we keep track of those positions that we hide, and we are upfront telling people that this is for a year. The ESAR grant funds, in some cases, will go for two years. We'll reassess and reevaluate our needs. And then one other item for the return-to-school and transition plan, which you'll hear more about at the end of, in August, either the first or second meeting, is around some of the other agencies that we're bringing on to support that transition back to school for our kids. Riverside Trauma Center is somebody that we've worked with in the past. They worked with us two years ago to develop our crisis planning, along with the town, looking at students when we were, it feels like it was eons ago when our focus was school shootings. Feels like that was forever ago. We don't want to lose that good work we did with Riverside in building our crisis intervention team, which includes townspeople. The goal during, until COVID hit, the goal was for them to come back on board with us and continue that planning, and that had to be put on pause. Right now, Riverside Trauma Center is working with the school district and the town to address the immediate needs of our children who have had exposure, are experiencing some trauma related to the events of the 26th, and I'll give you a little more information on that next. So just an update from the school side, and I will run through this relatively quickly, but I'm happy to share these notes with folks if they want them afterwards. I kept a timeline. I've been working side by side with Meredith and Terry and Sarko and a host of other folks regarding the event of the 26th and the impact that it immediately has on the school district, but then the long-term thoughts and the long-term impacts that we are anticipating overall. So beginning on the 26th, we're notified of the event and immediately began planning with Meredith and Terry. On the 28th, we had meetings with Meredith and Sarko to begin the planning of how to address our kids' immediate needs. We communicated with our principals, Riverside Trauma Team, and a few other agencies for support. We pulled the school adjustment counselors, who don't work during the summer. We pulled them all into the table as well on the 28th to begin the plan of how to identify and do the outreach to our families. And then I spoke with Larry Berkowitz, who is the CEO of Riverside, to see what services they could provide us immediately. We started with identifying our students who are directly affected, kids in the neighborhood, students who live in 1,000 Governor's Park, where the man who no longer exists lived, who killed the two people in our community. Identifying those students and reaching directly out to the parents. On the 29th, we sent a letter to families, letting them know about the event and what our plan was. July 1st, I reached out and attended the Jewish Community Vigil at the temple, and we began to identify or attempt to identify all the students who are Jewish that attend school here or even elsewhere. So working with the temple, and that work is continuing. On the 2nd, we had the trauma meeting with the town. We identified the roles of everybody in our group and what they were going to be doing for further outreach, and we discussed the role and the needs for the vigil, the vigil and the community meetings. We put boots on the ground during the vigil, which were our school adjustment counselors. Many of our students attended that vigil, and we needed trained eyes to be able to see people who were suffering in the crowd. And we did a lot of that work with the Boston Trauma Center, helped us make sure that we were present during that time. We also met, contacted Still We Rise, which is an outside psychiatry and psychological agency that deals with the BIPOC community. Did a follow-up meeting with Meredith and Sarko on that, and we met with those folks again today to see how to support our BIPOC community. And we're doing similar work with other outreach counselors that deal with the Jewish community, as well as our own students, which is Riverside, the students who are not in the BIPOC or the Jewish communities, but have been traumatized, the remainder of our students in the school district. July 7th, we brought the school adjustment counselors back in, and we also brought for kids-only and for kids-only services, many of our students. And then they spend the summer there, and we don't want to lose sight of those students, so we're involving them as well in all of the support systems that we are doing. As of now, we are in the process of scheduling. I met with Riverside today. We've identified about five groups of students who are seeking, or families are seeking counseling supports. We're calling it support groups and not direct counseling for these students, but it's support groups that'll be coming in from Riverside, meeting with the identified groups of kids, and then they're going to be taking it from there and giving us sort of what they believe the plan needs to be moving forward. We do know that many of our kids, because they're kids, this is the summer, and so this, trauma's from COVID, you know, trauma's from the June 26th event. Those things may not become something of focus for our kids until the fall, when they're back to school and their regular routine. So we're preparing for that as well, keeping all these stakeholders in our circle. So I just wanted to give you an update. There's been a tremendous amount of work that has been done. I can't thank the Winthrop Public School staff enough, from principals to assistant principals to counselors to families that have reached out and either volunteered their time or agreed to help us in some way. And some, and a lot of the professional organizations in town have done that as well. So next step, Leadership Academy. Leadership Academy is something we do every summer, where I sit with principals and assistant principals and administrators and talk about where we, where we were, where we are currently at, and where we are going. That is how we developed our strategic plan, that was a three-year plan, that we were hoping to accomplish everything by the end of this school year. Again, not getting the text message about COVID, prior to COVID happening, it's not in the strategic plan, but I can tell you that will be a big focus of our discussion as we move forward. We'll spend three days looking at the strategic plan as written to see what we'd like to continue, and then as a group from the work the teachers, principals, and admin have done throughout the school year, we'll be identifying new focal points for the strategic plan moving forward. And as all of you remember from my continuous discussions, that strategic plan will guide the goals that I will write for myself, which I have drafted and will be able to provide to the school committee for a review and revisit at some point, but it also will be guiding the principal's goals for the school year, and the principal's goals will be guiding the teacher's goals for the school year. Therefore, staying super focused, not trying to be a little bit good at a lot of things, but staying very focused in completing goals and objectives that we have for the school district and being able to report back how those goals have been achieved. It's going to be nice to get back to business, you know? We know things are not going to be exactly the same, but we are looking forward to meeting and talking again about where we're going, as opposed to sort of our trauma reactions, you know, to everything that's coming our way. So looking forward to that, and that will be July 20th, 21st, and 22nd. So between the strategic plan, the other big focus is the transitioning back-to-school plan and what that's looking like in each school. I don't necessarily believe it'll be a written plan because the strategic plan and goals will be guiding that work, but those discussions need to be more formal over the next few weeks. We've been meeting weekly anyway and sort of deciding what direction we're going to be going with transitioning, and that includes transitioning our staff. Our staff has also been offered counseling through the town, through the insurance agency of the town. Not for one minute do I think that my staff coming back to Winthrop, many who don't live here, are not going to have questions and concern. So tomorrow night, they'll have their first go with that, with the community support system that's going to be offering a stress and sort of anxiety group directly related to the, to the trauma of the 26th. But there are people with many questions, and they have also reached out to us. We have on our website, they have the ability to reach out, as do families, immediately if they need to speak with one of the school adjustment counselors. Technology update, Balsam Technology was awarded the bid for 21-22 school year. We had worked with retrofit for a few years in a row. We have added to our cadre of technology in a manner that is overwhelming. We also have realized over the past year that our teachers need a lot of training, protocols, and guidance on how to use this amazing technology that we have. So that award went to Balsam. They started July 1st, and they are evaluating everything that we have and working with us to see how best to support the school system so that we have minimal to no issues moving forward. I do think the best piece of Balsam, number one, is their, their level of on-the-ground support. When I say on the ground, everything is virtual. So now if you need your computer fixed, a couple of weeks ago, if you had a problem with your computer or you needed something downloaded, could take you two weeks to get that done. By the time you put in a ticket, one of our on-the-ground people get to you, they figure out if they can do it. If they can't do it, they send it to retrofit. With Balsam, everything is virtual, so the ticket systems go directly to them, and they can live, livestream into your computer. There's a word for it that is escaping me, but they can virtually just go onto your computer and do the work while you're sitting there. It will be much faster, much more efficient, and it will give our staff a reason to continue to understand and use the technology that they have. So we're, we're pretty excited about that. Miller Field has, is open to the public as of last Thursday, so Matt Serino worked with Larissa in Parks and Recreation to get hours open to the public. The hours are 7:00 to 10:00, Monday through Friday in the morning, and on the weekends, those hours are 9:00 to noon time, unless there is something scheduled for rental, which at the next meeting, I'd like to bring before the committee some further discussion on the rentals. We are not, we're still moratorium on renting facilities, except for the Miller, when Miller Field, we had a small amount of time where we were allowing public use for sports teams. That expired on June 30th, I believe. So we will need to revisit that to see if we're going to continue to rent out any aspect of the school, which includes Miller Field. I'll also be speaking with the town council, I believe, at the next meeting. Terry has asked me to come in and talk about the school district's plans for Miller Field moving forward. During the rebuild of, or the installation of Miller Field, the town was given the field back under the, under the umbrella of the town. I believe it was for the purpose of insurance and management of the Miller Field Committee and getting that work done. That work is just about done, so I'll be meeting with the town council to talk about the school district, taking back the oversight of Miller Field and everything that has to do with Miller Field.
And possibly the tennis court.
And possibly the tennis court. So the tennis courts, the tennis courts are almost completed, so MSBA funds paid for that project, and the school district uses those tennis courts during phys ed classes when it's nice out, and certainly for our tennis teams. So we will have some discussion about that. It's a little bit of a, it's a little less of a oversight issue. Miller Field is a much larger oversight issue in terms of what can happen on that field. It's a $9.8 million field, that there's lots of things that can be broken, ruined, touched, and without oversight of that field, it's a significant issue. Tennis courts are a little less of a problem. The community does use the tennis courts frequently, and they book that through Parks and Rec, and that's always gone well. So we'll be talking about some form of an agreement in which the school department uses it during certain times, maybe some signage would just be appropriate. So if it's a cold day and we're not out there, nobody's going to be throwing town members, you know, out of there if we're not using it. It doesn't make sense to keep it locked, but we'll be having further discussion about that. And the last thing is the DEI webpage. I want to thank the committee for their input. The school adjustment counselors are a big piece of the in-school DEI review, and part of that review and part of that process of us furthering our support systems around diversity, equity, and inclusion was the resource page that we had up on our website. We've been doing some great work on that with that particular team, seeking feedback from the committee, and that's been much appreciated. The DEI team has been sidelined for about two weeks now. Their work here has been very focused on finding our students in need based on, you know, the occurrences of the past couple of weeks. So they are meeting back with us next week, and I did receive feedback. Anybody who wants to give us some more feedback, they can. I will share the adjustments to the resource page, which includes adding some things for different categories of people that we didn't have on there before. It was timely, and we were able to do that. I'll share that out one more time with the committee, and then we will hopefully be able to have that resource ready for our families. And it's important to note, this is just a resource, and it's going to be an ongoing resource, especially for our staff, and what we can put up for parents, we will do our best. But, you know, our focus has been giving our staff as well resources as we move through, you know, challenging and changing times in the school district, and we want to make sure that we're doing it appropriately. So I thank the folks around the table for being able to give some feedback on that, and I'll send it out one more time before we're allowed to, or before we decide that we'll put that resource back out, out to the public. And it's not mandatory to have out to the public. You know, the thought behind it was making it available for those people who want to access it. It's definitely not a teaching tool, and it's not a curriculum. It's a resource that you could find, anything that we post, you could find on Google if you wanted to. We just tried to make it a little bit easier for some of our families. And that is my superintendent report.
Does anyone have any questions for Superintendent Howard? Ms. Swope?
One quick one.
Sure.
Lisa, you've mentioned that you were reducing the class sizes in K, K and 1?
So 1 and 2.
1 and 2.
1 and 2.
And it would, and so what are the usual class sizes for 3, 4, and 5 then?
So pretty much the same, I believe. I don't have the exact number with me. They're usually in the 20s, mid 20s.
Oh, that's what I thought. So it's not significant change.
The class size is not, is not huge, but, you know, three or four, you know, five student drop is significant when you're looking at intensive reading services for our students. And we still have our other remedial reading services, which we will continue to use, but the fair majority of learning loss in terms of reading, especially at the 1 and 2 grade level, was enough to open our eyes, to make sure that we grab a hold of those kids, and it's phonics, it's, it's everything. So that's how they'll categorize the kids when they do the intervention. So it's almost like a tier-two intervention.
So it's not the, is it the whole class or just the reading class?
Is it the entire class? Yeah, so if you add an, if you add an additional second grade teacher, that's one more teacher that can take on a class.
Yeah, but I was just thinking, so if their usual class is 25, let's say, and we have another teacher, then the class would be significantly different if indeed, you know, it would be maybe, what, 18?
Probably, probably 19 to 21, somewhere around there. In each classroom, it's going to depend on the total class size, the total number of kids. And they're working on that, they're working on the grouping of the kids to make sure that we're able to maximize the amount of time that we're working with our kids on in those specific areas, especially during RTI.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out if, I mean, how many first graders do we have altogether?
So off the top of my head?
No, you don't have to.
I don't have that, but it's in the one, I'm going to tell you, it's probably in the, anywhere from 120 to 150.
Is it growing?
It's grow, it is growing. There were a number of kids from kindergarten that didn't go to first grade, that were either fully remote, some kids were homeschooled, some kids went private. Kindergarten is going to be a bump. It'll be interesting. Usually, we hover around 155 to 160 in kindergarten. It'll be interesting to see how many we have enrolled in kindergarten this year. We are averaging, we're right on spot where we usually are at this time of the year. We always have a huge influx, influx in August, because everybody waits till the end of the summer to sign up. And just the reregistration is still going on, that's one thing I left out. We are continuing from our strategic plan of three years ago, reregistering every child in grades 3, 6, and 3, 6, and 9.
I saw that.
For the purpose of making sure. We only check your residency really once when you enroll in kindergarten, so this is a way to protect the school's budget, as well as the town tax-paying dollars, and keeping people sort of on track. This got very confusing when we let go of school choice many years ago, but people still think we have a school choice. still think we have a school choice and we don't. So we do, I know it's annoying, parents get upset that they have to do this. I've lived here for a hundred years, we understand. Uh, but we check every single, uh, student in those grades again to ensure that they are residing in this community. And that process is starting this week.
Moving on to personnel, Ms. Howard, do we have any appointments, resignations, retirements or leaves of absence?
Yes, so for appointments, we have Nicole Gregory, who is, um, has applied for and was, uh, the nominated candidate for the assistant principal. Andrea O'Leary of the Coming School, Andrea O'Leary has become the principal, thus leaving her assistant principal role. Uh, they did several, uh, interviews for the assistant principal position and Nicole Gregory, who was, uh, a teacher in our system prior to that, uh, is moving on, uh, to be the assistant principal. Um, and, and I'm a fan of movement from within. I really am. Um, and we'll talk more about that when you see some of the objectives in the strategic plan. But it makes sense when people are here for a period of time and ready to move them up in the ranks and, and keep that commitment there. Resignations, we have none and retirements, we have none. And postings, I've spoken about some of these, so I'll touch on them as I go. School adjustment counselor at the high school, that is the new one-year position. Custodian, uh.
Lisa, as, as you talk about some of them, would you tell us what the qualifications for them are?
Sure.
Cause there may be people in town.
Sure.
That would be interested, but they don't know.
Yeah, so that's a good point. School adjustment counselor, you have to have a school adjustment counseling license, so there's a teacher license. Um, and that is gonna be, uh, somebody who is in our high school, working with our students who are in need. Maybe students struggling to go into the lunchroom and don't wanna eat in the lunchroom, there might be a, a lunch group. Students who are experiencing something at home, students who are experiencing something in school, taking fifteen minutes to be able to talk to an adjustment counselor. They also do, uh, work with our teaching staff. Custodian at the Coming School, pretty self-explanatory, uh, we need that. Elementary SEL specialist, so that is a, um, a social emotional learning specialist and that person at the elementary level at the Coming School is actually gonna be a teacher in which the kids in grades three, four and five will have an SEL block every day. So instead of, um, not instead of, but in addition to say a computer class, you will go to your SEL class. And this is where we talk about things like being kind to each other, being, you know, having friendships, how to talk to each other, um, how to, how to seek out help if you need it. Um, will our, our bullying curric- anti-bullying curriculum will be part of that class as well. Um, the ASD teacher, that's, uh, at the, um, Gorman School, that is for a teacher who, uh, has resigned from the school system prior to this, that's teaching students with autism spectrum disorder. The K to two science teacher, uh, we have that position now, but that particular teacher wants to move into one of the open first and second grade positions. So, um, that, her position has become open. The first grade teacher is the one-year position to mitigate the learning loss in the area of reading and some other stuff. Uh, and as the same for, we had to post the second grade teacher and because a science teacher is asking for that position, we have to post that position. Uh, bathroom monitors, I, I wanna change that name, cause it's such a horrible name. We're not in the bathroom, we're not inside the room, we're not watching anyone. We are checking kids into the bathroom, making sure kids are going in one or two at a time. We can now increase that. Uh, we're making sure you wash your hands. But that, those people are also utility players for us. Uh, if in fact there is a teacher that needs to be out for a period to attend a special education meeting, um, y- we can use that person to cover that classroom as well.
We call them in-school monitors.
And that's a much, yeah, that's a much better name. So we're gonna strike the bathroom and put in-school monitors.
What are the qualifications for that?
Um, name, address.
Okay.
Pass a cor- you know, get a good clean query.
It's hard to, they need a certificate.
Yeah, yeah, really, somebody, uh, you know, from my perspective, you have to like kids, so we'll start there. You have to like kids, you have to, um, be able to communicate with kids. And, uh, you have to be willing to help us, you know? Uh, you don't need a driver's license, we're not asking you to drive a bus. You do have to have a query and fingerprints done and be willing to become part of an awesome team. So that's at the, uh, Gorman School. We also need, um, an ESP at the Gorman School to fill an open position, which is a, um, you have to, you have to be highly qualified, you, which means you either have to have a bachelor's degree, an associate's degree, or pass the ParaPro test, which is an online test. And those are teacher support in the classroom with the teacher. High school special ed teacher, um, I'm sorry, uh, special ed teacher at, at the middle school, that was for, uh, somebody who had resigned prior to this. That is in our, um, that is in our therapeutic classroom. So that's, uh, working with kids, um, with challenging, um, behaviors and also awesome behaviors that we can all learn from. Um, so we're looking for a, a person with a degree in special ed, uh, K to tw- uh, six to eight, uh, would, that's where the license would need to be. And then a couple of coaching positions, uh, cross-country, uh, coaching position. So I guess you have to run, be able to run, have some wind for that position, uh, as well as an assistant coach for that position. So you might have to run a little bit slower, but once again, you have to like children and be able to wear Winthrop Public Schools athletic apparel. Uh, and I believe that is it for open positions. We're almost full.
The mentoring. What about the mentoring?
Oh, the mentoring. So the mentoring positions that you see in there, um, we have teacher mentors. Nobody knows the value of a teacher mentor better than the girl sitting right here. Ed Nizara was my mentor for thirty, how long have I been here? Thirty-three years and still is to this day. Uh, we have mentors and it's part of the Department of Education's, um, you, we have to do it. We have to as- assign mentors to new teachers. And those, uh, mentors work with teachers throughout the school year, several meetings with them, um, several scheduled meetings where the curriculum director is, um, working with them about new teacher evaluation, uh, everything you need to know about the Winthrop Public Schools. They have an unbelievable little meeting the first week of school, that's with me, where I go through the top ten things I wish somebody told me the first year I became a teacher. Number one, read the contract. They think the one piece of paper that they sign, which is a letter of agreement to the school, is their contract. The teacher's contract is one-hundred-and-one pages, um, much of it is, you know, sort of useless information, but it's there.
Read it.
But we try, I talk a lot, to them a lot about, uh, sick time and why you shouldn't use it all, why it's not there for you, you know, just to take. It's not like you don't get a prize if you use all your sick days. Um, talk a lot about that, talk about communication with people, um, talk about building relationships with kids and how to start, because you could spend a hundred and eighty days trying to do MCAS, but if the kids don't think you care. So doing exercises around how to engage yourself with kids. Um, so those are the mentors and every new teacher has a mentor. Uh, then they cannot renew their license unless they have, uh, us sign off that they parti- fully participated in the mentor program. Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty intense program too. And that's it.
Okay, moving on, we have no new business or unfinished business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Powell, seconds. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabienko?
Yes.
Ms. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Thank you.